Good afternoon, everybody. I appreciate your attendance for today's October 1st Planning and Zone Commission Meeting. We currently have nobody in the audience. We will start off with the public hearing. We have one item. Case ORD 24-04 is a request of the City of Davenport to amend various sections of the zoning ordinance regarding residential building, design, and standards. We will now do roll call. Ladies Commissioner Tallman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dunlop.
Here.
Eichelberry.
Here.
Hepner.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Tallman here. Ingram.
Present.
Maynard.
Here.
Garrington.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Then Schneider.
Here.
We have a court, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can I ask whoever's phones ringing did?
Is this a device?
Oh, it's your device! Oh. Let's answer it.
Did Paul leave that this week?
Possibly. I don't think he was here, to be honest with you. All right, now we will reread the new business. Case ORD 24-04 requests the City of Davenport to amend various sections of the zoning ordinance regarding residential building, design, and standards. And this is for the entire city. Matt?
All right, thank you. So just a little bit of background behind this request and public hearing. So Davenport currently has citywide design standards for new residential construction. So that's for single-family, two-family, single-family, semi-detached, as well as townhomes. So these standards include a mix of structural requirements, design elements, as well as restricting finished materials. So there's been a recent change in state legislation that's impacted Davenport's ability to enforce and regulate these standards. So the purpose of this amendment really is to revise our ordinance to comply with the state legislation. So our current review process, so it's for residential structures. It is a point-based system that's meant to offer flexibility and design options to home builders, as well as homeowners. So it gives a catalog of different options for owners to choose from. And once when a total of 20 points has been achieved, it would comply with our design standards, and then permits would be issued. So the goal of these standards, really, they're meant to encourage architectural detail, create visual interest, and then enhance overall neighborhood character. And that sheet that's been passed out in front of you is a copy of that design standard scoring form. So points are awarded to the front facade of homes for different design features. So that would be like a prominent front porch with porch columns, transparency in the form of windows, other architectural features like dormers or decorative garage doors. And then we also award points for finished materials such as masonry or brick, decorative siding like shingle or maybe board and batten, offering points for gable brackets, and then as well, offering points for roof pitches over an 812 pitch, so a little bit steeper roof pitches, achieve points. And then on that score form, the only thing that you would lose points for would be for a front-facing garage that's more than half the width of the home. So there's just a couple of examples on the screen of two homes that have a garage that spans greater than 50% of the front facade. So on the screen before you, it's a pretty typical new single-family home that we might see here in Davenport, and how we would, under our current code, score the design of it. So it would get points for complying with our minimum transparency requirement of 5%. It has masonry along the base of the front facade. It would get points for having a prominent front entry, a decorative carriage-style garage door, decorative gabled fence, the roof pitch is over 812, so it would score points for that. It does have decorative siding and a decorative roof at the base of the gable. One of the requirements of our code is that if you have more than a two-stall garage facing the street, the third stall needs to be offset by a foot. So this house would meet that standard. But in terms of our code, it would lose five points because that garage composes over 50% of the front facade. So that brings us to House File 2388. So that was adopted by the state legislator, legislation, and became effective in July of this year. Basically, a city cannot enforce regulations that prohibit exterior cladding or finished materials, either directly or indirectly. There are some exemptions for that, so that would be historic districts, overlay districts, and special-purpose districts. This will not impact our Design Review Board, who oversees development in downtown, the Village of East Davenport, and Elmore Corners. You know, it does not impact our Historic Preservation Commission, or any historic district or local landmark. And it also does not impact multifamily structures over 12 units. So anything under 12 would get impacted by the state code. So what does that mean for the City of Davenport? So basically, our point-based system, as it stands today, would not be in compliance with the state law. But we still can enforce, it would be items 1, 2, and 3, on our design standard scoring form. So that's at the front entry, be an integral part of the structure, using features such as porches, steps, and stoops. We can still enforce the 5% transparency requirement, so that's basically requiring a window on the front elevation. And then the third component would be a building with a front facing attached three-car garage should have one of the garages offset by at least a foot. So those are components that don't regulate finished material that we can still enforce. So one of the components that is not covered by the legislation would be special-purpose districts. So as part of our code update, staff is going to recommend that these eight districts be considered special purpose. So that would be our R3C and R4C. So those are single-family and two-family central residential districts. So that's more of the core of Davenport, and more of our older, more established neighborhoods. The city center district, so that would be North Park Shopping Mall, the downtown district, Elmore Corners and the Village, which are regulated by the Design Review Board, institutional campus district, and then any current or future planned unit developments. So part of this code update, one item that staff would like to include with the design standards is addressing our transparency requirements for multifamily structures. So currently, our code requires multifamily facades facing public right-of-way to have a minimum transparency of 25%. So staff believes that this percentage should be adjusted to better reflect and align with building code and construction standards. So we have, the diagram on the right is three different elevations. So the top row would be a multifamily facade with 20%. So if you think about it, that might be like sliding glass doors and a set of double windows. Half of that roughly would be about 12%. And then at the bottom shows what maybe like a single-family home might be with a 5% transparency with the opaque garage door and front door. So one of the reasons why we think this number should be adjusted is looking at some of our developments in the City of Davenport. For example, Urbane 210, so it's a mixed-use structure, so commercial on the ground floor and then residential above. That has a transparency of 22%. So that's a downtown, urban type of construction that wouldn't meet our current code. So it kind of just gives you a feel for maybe that 25% being a little bit higher than what might otherwise align with building code requirements. And then a final component that staff would like to incorporate with this code update would be addressing accessory structures on through lots. So a through lot, that is a lot that is frontage on two different streets. So current code would prohibit an accessory structure in a front yard. So on a through lot, they have two front yards. There's the yard in front of the front door. And then it's also considered the front yard where the back of the home, or someone would consider the rear yard of that property. Zoning code would define that as a front yard as well. So the goal here really would be to correct an oversight in our code, to reduce nonconformities, and then provide just a common sense solution for many homeowners throughout the city. So accessory structures, what does that mean? So that's garages, storage buildings, sheds, carports, and even accessory dwelling units. So this diagram on the right shows a double frontage lot. So it has its front door along a residential street. That's actually Division Street behind it. So our code would consider what's highlighted in red to be the front yard. So in essence, this house wouldn't be allowed a detached garage, a storage building, a shed, a carport, or an accessory dwelling unit in what would be considered that home's So there's many examples of this throughout the city. So what's shown on the screen is a row of single-family homes along 35th Street who interact with 35th Street. However, their rear yard is Kimberly Road. So these are all through lots or double frontage lots. So this is one of many examples throughout the city that this code would impact. So we've seen a couple of hardship variances come through over the last few years, so we feel like this might better align with some of the values of homeowners that have double frontage lots. So for tonight, it's to hold the public hearing, and then staff will provide a recommendation, as well as the formal text change itself, at the next meeting on October 15th.
Electronic issues here. I'm a little concerned that there's nobody here. Do we not publish this to, or send it out to realtor groups, or individual realtors, or build, home builder groups? I mean, I would think this would bring some impact.
We followed our code, which is just a notification in the newspaper.
Wow. Okay, that was my only question or opinion. Commissioners, any thoughts? Commissioner Schneider.
Does each city in the Iowa Quad Cities have to adhere to this?
Yes. So this is a statewide legislative update. City of Davenport, from what we're aware of, from our legislative branch of the Iowa Planning Association, said that Davenport's the only city that had citywide housing standards. The rest of them had special-purpose districts or very specific areas. They did not have a citywide residential design standards. So it's impacting us disproportionately, but it is something that holds true through the whole state.
So if a builder were to build here in Davenport versus saying building in Bettendorf, they would be, have stricter coherence here than they would have to in Bettendorf? Is that correct or not?
Well, it's, our general observation is that this house is what's built in Bettendorf no matter what. It is trying to push for same quality that we would expect to see elsewhere in Iowa.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson.
Oh, thank you. I have several questions. One, I was curious of what the total value of the example that you gave us was. Then I guess I have concerns that we would keep the restrictions on what seems to be our most lighted and, like, you know, area, that it makes it even more difficult for them to accomplish improvements. I guess it's not improvements, it's new construction, correct?
Yeah.
Gosh, what was my, my third? Oh, and then my third, just looking at that as the, with the example of the building downtown as far as transparency and the 22%, did they apply for variance then when they built that, or how did, how did that happen?
So Urbane 210, it's not a multifamily building. It's a mixed-use, so those standards don't apply. But I thought that that would be a good example, showing that even a building with commercial storefront windows on a ground floor still does not meet that 25% threshold.
Right, right. Good example. Thank you.
Commissioner Hepner.
Chairman, when you say staff, I'm just trying to get an idea. Who is staff? Is it just you and Matt and Laura is staff, or who else is? Who composes staff, making?
So in total, there's three planners. So it's myself, Matt, and Scott Copes. We did run it past legal, and we did run it past our acting city administrator, and then the Development and Urban Services Director as well. And so, going back to Commissioner Johnson's question about the special-purpose districts, I think our thought was in dictating these as special-purpose districts, this council's prerogative was to protect neighborhood character in the urban core. So they actually have a separate set of design standards that aren't part of that scoring sheet. It basically says it needs to fit the neighborhood. So you don't get something that is a cinder block building mixed in with a historic neighborhood or things like that. It was really important to council at the time, in 2020, to ensure that there was some level of, hello? Some level of protection in that urban core, so that disadvantaged neighborhoods were not being taken advantage of in terms of infill development, if that makes any sense. And Habitat for Humanity has been able to comply with this, when they have done their infill in the urban core of the city.
Thank you for that, Laura. I appreciate it. Habitat for Humanity was on my mind as a volunteer. I'm struggling with this a little bit, and I'd like, I'm eager to hear the rest of the council speak, but as a former design person in my former life, and now I see value in doing this. However, I see the cost that Commissioner Johnson brought up as a concern. The build costs in some of these residences that you showed were much higher. So I'm eager to hear what the rest of us have to say about it. Thanks.
Yes, and I wouldn't want to state that the state did this to ensure more affordability in the housing.
Definitely, I can see that. I had one other thought. I'll come back to that, though. Thanks.
Well, and I want to jump in. That's one of the reasons I'd love to hear from builders, to hear their comments, but if we can't reach out to them, I think that's kind of an injustice to what we're trying to do, to at least see what the impact would be in their world. But I understand. Commissioner Schelling.
Yes, could you go back to where you were talking, the through lots? So would that be like any houses, like on Division Street? The entire neighborhood, all along the street, would be a through lot because, so you're saying they can't have anything in that, they don't have a backyard? So they can't have any sheds or anything?
Currently, as it's written in our code, that's correct. So that's why we would like to address this right now.
Because you're denying them a backyard.
Pretty much.
And they can't control that.
And, so we did have, as Matt mentioned, hardship variance for this, that brought up the lot discussion related to it. In particular, what you have through lots, you often have the larger yard separating you from the busier street. So you have a lot of distance. We actually, for fences, allow solid fences along our collector and arterial streets. So you could have a solid fence, you wouldn't be able to see that house in great detail from these larger inner, you know, roads throughout the city. So it did spur a lot of conversation amongst the planning staff, and it is pretty well-supported through our admin staff, too. We do have a lot of through streets throughout the city, and we'll see more and more, because engineering, in order to have efficient traffic networking, doesn't want driveways on our collectors and arterials, because that creates a lot of safety issues. So it's going to, for new development, continue to be a problem. We're going to have more and more through lots, too.
I guess that's what I'm asking. We're talking about changing that so that these people do still have a backyard?
So they would technically be a front yard. What I'm kind of envisioning is saying where, where you have a through lot and you don't take access from that street, you're allowed to put an accessory structure there, but probably at least meet the principal use setback. So like a normal house setback, instead of our typical accessory structure setback is only four feet. I think that's too close, but get it back a little bit further, and so you would still have the ability, because as I mentioned in this photo here, you have quite a bit of space in between the house and Division Street that you could have a shed or an accessory structure of another kind. And we feel like it's only fair for them to be able to treat it more like a backyard.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Garrington.
Yep, the, I'm going to agree, Commissioner Johnson. We have a new subdivision in my area, and I'm sure they were working off of this point system, because every single house had thrown everything they possibly could on it. However, all those houses were $300,000 or $400,000, which is a little tough for a starting-out couple. And I, I think one of the things, yes, this was meant to make Davenport beautiful. I can understand that. But we also need to have some low-income, the low-income housing, or encourage builders to build houses with some low income. You know, we're looking at under $200,000. We want to have some homes that a new couple can move into. And I think we're driving them away to other places just to find housing. Everybody goes to the wet, you know? Anyway, yeah, so I think one of the things we need to look at when we're making standards is, how are we going to encourage low-income housing, or not low, but medium-income housing or starter-income housing, along with beautiful housing as well? I agree with you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garrington. Commissioner Dunlop.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question about what the state, in the original slide, you were saying they're limiting the materials? I mean, is it, is it specific to materials, or is it features? You know, I'm just curious, you know, if you want to have something that is some way like what's already there, you know, can it be accomplished and still meet the goals of this new state rules? You know, understanding, you know, all the comments that folks have made about that it might increase the cost, but certainly the city was interested in, you know, trying to drive towards a nice look on these homes. And I guess I'm not completely convinced that some of these features are, you know, very expensive, you know? I mean, it's just a style in many cases. But I guess that's my question. Is it limited to exterior cladding or finish? So I mean, I guess my question is, you know, could you still do a system like what you're wanting, maybe, maybe scale it back from what is in this current one and comply with the state rules if you weren't specifying certain materials versus features that you want?
Good question. We definitely had that conversation with legal on what exactly is a finished material, because that's not something that's actually defined in the building code. So we wanted even make sure the window was actually considered a structural element versus a finished material. There's a lot of discussion about that, honestly. To answer your question, yes, you could. I would caution us on doing that, in that actually structural features are way more expensive to do than a finished material. So it would be, what I would worry about, and significantly worry about, is the state just coming back next legislative season and taking that ability away from us as well.
Yeah, well, yeah, I guess it all depends on what direction you want to try to go. I mean, clearly, someone, when this was developed, you know, there was some thought put into this document to try and drive a certain direction, and maybe it's too far, you know, in its construct, and too prescriptive in driving prices. But I guess, I don't know that this in and of itself is what's driving home prices in Davenport certainly a certain direction. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, I think it's important to think about the aesthetics of the homes that you're trying to put in, and if the city believes that there's a reason. I mean, maybe there needs to be nothing, and this can, you know, I mean, maybe, or limited extremely compared to what was here. I just, I guess I would consider that I think finishes are one thing, and, you know, you have some things in here that are listed as finishes, where you're being very prescriptive in saying it has to be, you know, brick or block or other type of finish versus architectural features, which aren't structural, that I don't know, or features. You know, I hear what you're saying, they could come back and, and come back with more legislation, but it, you know, if we feel like it's important, maybe it's still worth considering, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunlop. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. Again, I apologize. I guess, so my other thought, too, was on the, on the builder note, as far as, so I know when we came up with this point system, right? Was it, weren't they consulted, some builders consulted?
Yeah. So I don't have full background on it, but from my understanding, what happened is the city enacted its zoning code. The builders, it was actually a higher transparency. Builder, the building, the residential builders had a major problem. And so they had sat down and worked with the Home Builders Association on developing that point system. That didn't mean that they were, there was still quite a few people in that faction of home builders that.
Were still not thrilled.
Still not thrilled. So, and to be honest, it's also, there is a level of administrative burden on our review of homes as well. It does take a lot longer for us to review this. But yes, you are 100% right on that. It was something that sat down and the.
So I would just make the assumption, and not that I would speak for them, but then reducing the restrictions would obviously be, you know, amicable to them, yeah. I would think that they would be happy with that.
They were also extremely supportive of the legislation at the state level.
I know. So then on that, I was curious if it only, it only applies to the design standards, it applies to other items as well, like stormwater detention and things like that?
There was a separate legislative piece that did change some stormwater requirements. I don't think it did what they thought it was going to do, and we'll see how that ends up playing out in the long run. So that has been addressed through the city already, so that piece of ordinance has been put in place, and we'll just have to observe and see what kind of ramifications that one has. But some, there were some things that made sense. Legislation said you, you calculate your stormwater runoff off existing levels. You can't make them go back to a prairie level. And so if you had pavement, and you're disturbing pavement, you calculate it for pavement, so that it does reduce the overall stormwater detention areas for newer developments.
Got it. Thank you. And then, just curious, I waited a second, but were you able to calculate what the point total is on that current property, or that example that you gave us? I'm just kind of curious, what is, like, are they all like stretching to get to 20? Okay, so are they at 40?
I don't have the exact number on that one, but it's well above 20.
Okay.
Just anecdotally, in the almost four years I've been here, I think we've denied one house, and that home builder came back and made a couple of minor adjustments.
It literally had no window.
Yeah.
And so I basically were asking just for at least a window on the front part of your house.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Maynard.
Thank you. This is just a general question that came to my mind after seeing these accessory dwelling units. Can you basically tell us what those are and where they're allowed?
Sure. So accessory dwelling units are allowed in most of our residential districts. It's exactly what it sounds like. It is, dwelling units is accessory to your main building. So we do have in our code that they have to be detached, because if you attach, if you have an accessory dwelling unit in your house, you have a two-family home. And so in some districts, like R2, or R1, excuse me, does not allow two-family homes, because largely those are on septic. They're larger lots that are typically out in larger areas and may be on septic. So we do have size limits to the size of that accessory dwelling unit. It would be no more than 1,000 square feet, which is actually quite large. And they are supposed to be in the rear yard. Um, and, um, they are supposed to be in the rear yard. We do not make, um, we don't have a requirement for additional off-street parking, um, but they do need to have their own utility metering. Because we, it's part of the building code actually. So if you end up renting that out, because we can't control if you rent or, or own, uh, if you end up renting that out, your tenant wouldn't have control over their utilities. So that's generally, um, they're required to be in the side or rear yard. So again, if you have two, double frontage lot, you don't get an accessory dwelling unit. So, um, if, if, if there's anything else related to that that you would like, let me know.
Thank you, Commissioner Manus. Commissioner Hepner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so this document from the state was, looks like it went live May 2024. Have you reached out to other municipalities or cities on what they're doing?
So we talked to the Iowa APA, um, and I don't know if Matt has more information on this. This literally, we're, we're like the only people this is impacting at this degree. Um, it doesn't, it, it specifically exempts out special purpose districts and overlay districts.
Pioneers.
Other, other communities are pretty much okay. They don't really need, it doesn't really bother them one way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just curious. Thanks, Laura.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner. Any additional questions or comments? Final call? Seeing none, that will close the public hearing agenda and we'll move on to our regular meeting. Agenda, roll call please. Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dunlop.
Here.
Eichelberry.
Here.
Hepner.
Here.
Johnson.
Still here.
Tomlin, here. Ingram.
President.
Manus.
Here.
Garrington.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Schneider. Have a call, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Report the city council activity.
There's actually nothing new this time.
Thank you. Secretary's report.
Move the report.
All in favor of the secretary's report as printed, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, it will stay as printed. Complain, anything?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Do not have any zoning activity or subdivision activity tonight? Any future business, anybody?
We do have one item under other business.
Yes, I saw that.
It's weird, it's a weird order.
I was gonna say, but we're not there yet.
Sorry.
Any communication before I go to other business? Laura? Anything?
No.
Thank you. Other business? KCD 24-01.
I'll be abstaining from this.
Thank you. Case AD 24, ED 24-01 is a request of City of Davenport to expand the North Urban Renewal District, or Area to include the site of the new Fair Oaks Foods facility. Matt?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? I guess we need a motion. Nice, so moved. It's been moved and seconded. Matt?
All right. So this is the request made by Fair Oaks Foods to include the property in what's called the North Urban Renewal Area. And that's in order to make proposed improvements to the site eligible for tax incremental financing. Um, so the commission's role really is to review the amendment for conformance with the city's comprehensive plan and then make a recommendation to city council. Um, so this site, um, it's just north of the Quad Cities Freight Services, um, site and south of Mid-American Energy. Um, so it is located in the city's industrial park, uh, near the airport, which is zoned I-1 light industrial district. Uh, Fair Oaks Foods is a food manufacturing, uh, facility that's under development and city's comprehensive plan shows this region as industry. So really with that, it's staff's opinion that the proposal is consistent with our comprehensive plan and it meets the objective of creating a positive business climate that encourages growth of existing and new businesses. So really with that, uh, staff is recommending that the commission forward, uh, this case to city council with a recommendation for approval, given its conformance with our comprehensive and future land use plan.
Thank you, Matt. Any comments or discussion, commissioners? Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you. I guess I just have one question. So is it just that, it's the whole area or not, or just the parcel that we're talking about?
So it's, it's just adding this, the way that, um, Suzanne Knutts, her economic development manager's here too, if you want to hear some of the mechanism behind this. So the urban, the North Urban Renewal Area is, uh, by, created by ordinance by the city. So that's why it's requesting the plan's own commission's recommendation on it. So you, you do amend it in by, by legal description, by area. So, um, it currently is not, so it would be added in. We do not add in areas, uh, unless, um, they're ready for divi, development because we have a limit of 20 years, um, and, uh, for areas added in to be part of a, a TIF. So we, we try to use that very sparingly, but if you have any other questions, we do have Suzanne here to help answer. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Anybody else? Commissioner Garrington.
Is the, uh, TIF part of the deal to get them to come in?
Wherever you want to go. You're on.
Yes, part of the deal, it, it's a, it's basically a 15-year rebate TIF. So it's a 60% rebate over a period of 15 years. It's, it, it's one that's been out there and then they ran into cost increases with, uh, building cost materials, um, interest rates rising, so they kind of had to refocus, uh, you know, take about an 18-month pause and then, and then bring it back. And they make bacon, so if you like bacon.
I remember, I remember the bacon coming and going.
Yes, it's back. Bacon is back. And this, and this is specifically tied to job creation too.
We'll ask my rabbi if it's okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Garrington. Anybody else? Seeing none? Roll call please.
Dunlop.
Yes, sir.
Eichelberry.
Yes.
Hepner, abstains. Johnson.
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
Schilling?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Anybody in the, nobody here still? Would there be any, uh, additional comments or thoughts for the end of the meeting? Seeing none?
Do adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjournment, signify by aye.
Aye.
Same sign for opposed. Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.
Thank you.